All right, the time is now seven o'clock and I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Gibbs, will you please read the statement of compliance?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. Notice that this meeting has been properly advertised in Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate locations and a copy has been filed with the Quantic Township Clerk.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Here.
Mr. Cerise is absent. Mrs. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Giddon?
Here.
It's I K O?
Here.
Mr. McSweeney?
Here.
Mr. Pompeo?
Here.
Mr. Senick?
Here.
And Mr. Shannon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone please stand for the flag salute? All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February third workshop meeting. I have a short report tonight. First, tonight, the board will honor PV students that have been selected to the North Jersey Junior High Area Band. This is a great accomplishment and the board congratulates you. Also, sticking with PV, the board would like to congratulate both the boys and girls basketball teams for becoming Morris County Champions, and we look forward to honoring them at a future meeting. Uh, last, the board would like to congratulate Mr. Sillipina for being selected as the recipient of the Robert Hopack Professional Development Award. Mr. Sillipina does a great job and the award is well deserved. That's it for me and I'll pass it over to Dr. Portis.
Thank you, Mr. Senick, and I will continue to pass it along. Uh, the agenda lists, uh, initially, we listed Liliana as speaker. Obviously, we have the Zegler Twins, so floor is yours.
Evening, everyone. So nice to see you all again. Congratulations to Mr. Sillipina for being the recipient of the Robert Hopack Professional Development Award by the Directors of Athletic Association of New Jersey. Congratulations to Gavin Wiz on taking third place at the one hundred forty-four pounds in the Morris County Wrestling Tournament, and congratulations to the former PTHS Wrestling Coach Craig Spencer on earning a place in the Morris County Wrestling Hall of Fame. And also congratulations to Sophia Clutcha, who placed second in the NJAC Tournament for Girls. Good luck to all the winter sports in their county and state tournaments. Congratulations to the ice hockey seniors who were recognized last night, and thank you for your hard work over the last four years. The boys' basketball will be having their senior night on February eleventh. Come out and support the senior boys as they get recognized for their hard work and dedication over the last four years. Spring sports signups and meetings took place last week. All sports paperwork needs to be submitted prior to participating. The deadline for the paperwork is February twenty-first. The excitement is nearing as the junior formal will be held this Friday at the Barnyard and Carriage House. Emily will finish the rest. The third marking period has started, and I can't believe we are already halfway through the year. Students have been working hard and seniors have been getting ready to send their mid-year transcripts to colleges. Teachers will be entering recommendations in the core courses in the next week for grades eleven through two eight for the next year. From there, students will get a chance to see what their list of requested and recommended courses are, and then the administration will begin to build the schedule. There will be a FAFSA workshop for the class of twenty twenty-five parents and students on Thursday, February sixth, at six P M. In the PTHS cafeteria, there will be a HESA representative on hand to assist with the FAFSA process. FAFSA involves financial aid for those students who are attending college. The Noctive sang in the quarterfinal competition this weekend. And Mr. Pakoli, a teacher at PTHS, has started a Quantic's Got Talent Group where students can highlight talents from singing to dancing to playing instruments. Students can sign up on the Google Classroom and perform during lunch periods in the coffee shop type environment. Our first talent show will be on February fourteenth. An email went out on Friday to all the seniors and their parents regarding the application process for local scholarships. The application deadline is February twenty-eighth. If you have any questions, please contact Mrs. Hummel in the guidance. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Excellent. Thank you both, and I will just say, as a parent of three kids who are either in college or recently were, those scholarship nights are well worth attending um, as that definitely helps out enormously. I'm glad you're here. We're doing the FAFSA um, workshop as well and having somebody from H E S A A, that's a New Jersey organization, higher education, something, I lost track of it. Sorry, stage fright, but it's, uh, they're, they're very good organization. They help out a lot of people. Higher Education Student Assistance Association. I'm winging it, sorry. Mr. Shea, I hope you cut the tape on that. Anyway, thank you very much for your presentation. I'll do a quick report as well where hopefully I can-
Real quick, Dr. Portis, uh, the Zegler girls are being very modest about their, and they didn't mention their own recognition.
Wait a minute. I, I wasn't aware of this. Do tell, Mr. Blumer.
They were, so they were recognized by the NJ State Girl Soccer Association, right? So congratulations on that.
All right, congratulations. Excellent. In a moment, I'm going to call Mr. Curtis up. I'll just give a quick summary of my report. Uh, this time of the year, I tend to focus an awful lot on the weather, as is generally the case in New Jersey in February. I'd like to thank everyone who worked really hard to get our buildings ready with some challenging weather over the past two school days. Uh, fortunately, it looks like we have more coming on Wednesday night into Thursday, which Mrs. Esposito was kind enough to remind me about that. Very excited for that. And then, um, they're already making a prediction about Wednesday of next week, which is kind of like throwing out a dartboard, but we'll see. Good news is we still have four snow days in the bank. Um, ideally, we'd love to be able to carry them and have a very, very long Memorial Day weekend or something of that sort, but we'll see. Um, and keep looking to make the correct call each time around. So really appreciate the support. Our buildings and grounds guys and our stories have worked incredibly hard along with help from our local DPW. Really great partnership there. Um, I presented on PSAT and SAT success back on January twenty-third. When I pulled into the lot, I thought I had a packed house. I was really excited for it. Turns out that there was a sixth grade music show that coincided with it, and that's what everybody was going to, but the dozen or so people who made it seemed to really enjoy it, and it was a lot of fun for me. I got to feel like a teacher again. Uh, the next day, which was Friday, the twenty-fourth, we hosted some friends from the administrative team from Dover High School, uh, showed them around PTHS. They wanted to learn more about our experience moving to a later start time and the rotating drop block schedule. Mr. Hazler, as one would expect, was an outstanding host. And it was a lot of, it was a lot of fun being able to share what we've learned in our experiences um, and to kind of pay it forward because a lot of districts were very generous with us. So if we can do the same for some of our friends, it's really a good thing. Um, Sunday of the twenty-sixth, I was honored to be one of the educators recognized at the hockey team's educator appreciation game. Um, it's incredibly thoughtful event and I, I was really flattered that one of the players thought of me. Um, Max, you'll probably see a commensurate spike in his grade point average because I have that kind of clout. Um, but all kidding aside, I, I couldn't feel my toes for most of the game, but it was really exciting and I thoroughly enjoyed ceremony and, and, and the game. Um, and that was really wonderful. And then Friday last week, Hillview celebrated its annual Immigration Day event. Um, I will say the empanadas were great and North Boulevard had its science fair. And then, and exciting note, today, SJG hosted its Reading Rocks Assembly. Um, today I was able to meet with the HSA presidents who were incredibly flexible about the timing. We had to push it back a little bit with the delay. But we brought in Mr. Sardo from the Chamber of Commerce and we're trying to help, um, build better pathways between um, organizations that are affiliated with the Chamber and our Home and School Association Presidents. And then just looking ahead, uh, Unified Basketball takes place tomorrow in the PTHS gym. I believe it's at three thirty. If anybody needs clarification, it should be on the district calendar. If not, shoot me an email. And then I'm also excited, um, Thursday, assuming the schedule works okay and the weather behaves. Uh, I'm going to be interviewing the man of the year from the, uh, Football Super Conference, um, which is, uh, Henry Struble. And we're looking to, uh, push a podcast out about that shortly thereafter. So that concludes my report and with that, I'd like to, um, welcome Mr. Michael Curtis up to the podium, uh, where he's going to introduce two students who we're very proud to say um, are members of the area band.
Thank you, Dr. Portis. Uh, so a little bit about area band. Uh, it is an honor band program with students from middle schools throughout Morris, Sussex, Passaic, Essex, and Warren Counties. This year, we had two students, Nicholas Finnegan and Keon Odgers successfully auditioned for and placed very well in the ensemble. Nicholas placed sixth chair clarinet and Keon third chair bass clarinet. These students have worked on scales, sight reading, and a solo since September and have honed their craft. Both Keon and Nicholas learned the value of practice, hard work paying off, and sharpening their skills through slow focused work. It's a lot for anyone to do, let alone, let alone a middle schooler. Congratulations on all, all your hard work and we wish you good luck on your next audition for region band this Saturday, where they will be auditioning with students from all across North Jersey. Please join me in congratulating Keon and Nick. Well, we start with, uh, Keon Odgers. You want to come first? And Nick Finnegan?
And if that wasn't, uh, fun and exhilarating, we have Dr. Portis to give us a presentation.
All right, thank you. I will not be talking about Seven Industrial Road. All right, excellent. All right. Thanks for putting this up there, Mr. Shea. So this is a report on students, uh, who took the fall assessment of the NJGPA, which is the graduation proficiency assessment. Um, we, we had, uh, mo-most students took it as part of the spring administration, but we also have to report on the fall administration. Uh, though background, the NJGPA is administered in March of each school year to grade eleven students. It is currently a graduation requirement for students in the class of two thousand twenty-five. And students who did not meet the proficiency levels in March had the opportunity to take the NJGPA again in October, which obviously they did. Um, and also if students do, uh, do not pass the October administration, um, we have an assessment called the AccuPlacer, which students can take as another opportunity. And if that doesn't work, uh, we can also provide an, a portfolio assessment. Um, and then in the, in the text box, you've heard me say it, and more likely now you'll hear Mrs. Vansko say it, um, that anytime we get assessment data, it's really good to look at it as a snapshot. And when you put all those different snapshots together, uh, you start to get the moving picture that gives you a better understanding of student performance. And I put in the fancy phrase about it being part of a recursive process. And that's intentional because you really want the outcomes that we see in these assessments should help us have a better understanding of what we need to have in our curriculum to meet their needs, but more specifically, what are we doing instructionally that helps us better address the standards that may not be as successfully tested as we would like? And we can also break it down for individual students as well. That's one of the keys to differentiate instruction. So again, the NJGPA is designed to measure the extent to which students are considered graduation ready in ELA and math. Each one is its own separate test. Um, and the ELA component aligns to grade ten standards, and then math is aligned to both Algebra One and Geometry. And just for the record, the, um, the way the standards are set up for English Language Arts, there's the grade nine through ten band, and there's a grade eleven through twelve band. So we had a total of eight students or to eight tests administered, uh, for the fall two thousand twenty-four participation. After all this buildup, uh, I hate to disappoint you, since the number of students taking the test is fewer than ten. Um, we can't report on it by, um, by state rules, so, um, I'm not actually going to share any data with you, but good thing to know is that we did administer the test. Students did take it. Um, and we are using it for the all important next steps. And we like to always ask questions, so what, now what, to try to draw conclusions about how we can use the assessment, not just as a static point, but to look at how we can better align our instruction um, for these individual students and if there are trends, how can we evolve uh, instruction for our classes and grade levels? Um, we do like to look at the predictive validity of these assessments, um, and that, um, middle bullet point, continue to incorporate released items into assessments. It's really important. You don't want students to see the assessment design for the first time when they're taking the test. It's really important to have students taking questions that are practicing with questions that are consistent with what they're going to see on the NJSLA, what they're going to see on the NJGPA, really what they're going to see on the ACT and the SAT as well. You, you want it, you want your assessment tools that you're administering locally to mirror what they're going to see at the state and national level. And then I liked that last bullet a lot, focus on a culture of growth and learning opportunities for all students. Um, I preached it when I was an elementary school principal. I'll continue preaching it till I'm no longer an educator. Somebody tells you they can't do something, they can only say that if it's followed by the adverb yet. Um, so if somebody says, I'm not good at algebra, you're not good at algebra yet. Um, and that, to me, that's really important. I want all of our kids to really embrace that, that where you are today is going to be the, the weakest version of where you are for the next month, for the next two months, for the rest of the school year, because you're going to keep building every day and, and getting stronger. I just thought of that on the spot. And finally, tha- thank you. Um, we, we appreciate the board's support. We appreciate the audience's interest in this as well. Um, and obviously, thank you to Mrs. Vansko. She's the one who prepared this presentation. Unfortunately, she's not feeling well, so uh, I stepped up for her and gave this scintillating presentation. Um, any questions from the board regarding the data that I can't really talk about? Excellent. All right. Well, it's been a wonderful audience. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Portis. Mr. Gibbs, do you have a report?
Yes, uh, good evening. On January twenty-seventh, Dr. Portis and I met with Mr. Strauss and Mr. Obadoza, who are the architects assigned to work with us on the new facility at Seven Industrial Road. We also met with the owner of the building as well as the Director of Facilities, Director of Security, and Director of I T. The merit meeting was very productive in that we were able to pie- piece together the plans that will be conducive to the new preschool as well as the board office. More information will be provided at tonight's FFA discussion. The two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget process continues to move forward and that we are awaiting our state aid numbers to come in. On January twenty-seventh, a letter from the state was received regarding the certified tuition for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, which reads follows: Preschool came in at fourteen thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars per student. Grades one through five, sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars per student. Grade six through eight, sixteen thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars per student. Grades nine through twelve, eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars per student. Learning, language, disability, mild and moderate, or LLD program, came in at nineteen thousand five hundred eleven dollars. Emotional regulation impairment, or BD program, came in at twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars. Multiple disabilities came in at thirty thousand one hundred and seven dollars, and preschool disability came in at twenty-three thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. One of the boilers at the North Boulevard was down for about a week, but is now back and running. Uh, we are waiting to see if the repair is covered by the warranty. We received an Oprah request for the school, uh, con-contact information for the school staff. The request was handled in compliance with state guidelines. And finally, this is just another reminder that if you haven't submitted your financial disclosure statements, to please do so as soon as possible. Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead, Dr. Portis.
Thanks. I, I just want to add one thing too, um, about the meeting to which Mr. Gibbs alluded, where we met with the architect as well as the, the owner of Seven Industrial. And I just want to commend Mr. Gibbs. It was, I felt a very well-run meeting. It was very efficient. It was, it was about two hours and it was a very intense two hours, but it wasn't intense in the sense of high tension. It was, it was very collaborative. I think we really learned a lot. And, uh, we generated a planning document to, to further refine our advanced thinking as we look towards expanding pre-K for the district, and we were able to pull in people from all different groups in our district. But, um, I just wanted to offer that out there. I felt it was very productive. Um, and I, I was glad that the, um, the property owner and as well as our architect could see that this is how we work. We, we collaborate with one another. Um, we ask challenging questions and try to figure out how can we make things work best. So I just thought I would offer that out.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, we have our first opportunity for public comment. I'm not going to read the spiel because there's no one in the audience, so there's no one here to speak, so we're going to close public comment and move on to the approval of the action items. First up is PMC, and I'm going to ask Machen to move the items under PMC, please.
Absolutely. I would like to move PMC one forty-nine dash twenty-five through PMC one fifty-two dash twenty-five.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerise is absent. Mr. Giddon?
Yes.
Mrs. I K O?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, up next is CIS. Mrs. Esposito, would you please move the two items under CIS?
Sure, I'd like to move CIS sixty-one dash twenty-five and CIS sixty-two dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerise is absent. Mr. Giddon?
Yes.
Mrs. I K O?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us into our workshop. First up is PMC, and there's three items, the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendar, the staffing update, and the shared services discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Senick. Um, obviously, we'll go in, in sequence. So, uh, the first item, I just want to put it out there that we have begun the process of working on generating a calendar for the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Um, something that the board had pushed for a couple of years back, and I think is a really good idea, is to get these calendars out um, as quickly as we, not as quickly, as soon as possible, um, without compromising quality, of course, so that, uh, people can better plan around them. Um, and I just want to point out that it's a confluence of a few things that make it a little more challenging or a lot more challenging as an effective calendar developer. Um, Labor Day could not be any later than it is in two thousand twenty-six. It is on September seventh. Looking at that, our, we do our normal two days of PD. We would have those professional development days, the eighth and ninth, and bring the kids in on the tenth. Um, we also have a very early Easter in two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, it is on March twenty-eighth, which is coincidentally the day after my wife's birthday, so I should remember that. But, um, that would, March two thousand twenty-seven, that would force us to have, um, a fairly early spring break, which gives us a long stretch. And then looking at the, um, graduation days for PV and the high school with that would be June twenty-second and June twenty-third. Um, this is all also without including, um, additional religious observances. Um, so this is about as, about as pared down as the calendar can be. So, um, we are working on it. It's not it's not a great calendar, uh, to be quite honest.
I, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do we have any, um, any of the, any of our neighboring districts? I mean, I think we're one of the only districts that really um, plan ahead calendar-wise, but do we have any feedback from any of the neighboring districts to get some information as to like what their plans would be as well?
Yep. Yeah, and I used my lofty status as the treasurer of the Morris County Association of Superintendent's. Yes, yeah. Well, I, I didn't get a T-shirt, um, so I, I'm, I'm kind of bummed out about that. Now that you bring that to my attention, but um, I did send out a survey, uh, last week asking people to get back to me about their, their advanced planning for the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar, as well as any, um, any barriers that they might have. So, um, I, I asked them to get it done by, um, close of business on Friday. I just have to break down the data, but I'll, I'll report back to the board about, um, what, what we, what we find there. I'm not, I'm not above, uh, stealing from our neighbors.
Awesome. Thank you.
With permission.
I like that both calendars had full vacation weeks, like around Christmas and spring break. Everything was, nothing started on a Monday or, or, uh, ended on like a Thursday and you came back on a Friday.
Yeah, and, and that's a great point. I kind of glossed over the, um, the winter recess. So, uh, Christmas Eve is on a Wednesday, so we would obviously, uh, sorry, on a Thursday, we would have a half day on Wednesday, the twenty-third. Um, and then school would be closed on Thursday, the twenty-fourth of December, Christmas Day, which is Friday, the twenty-fifth of December, two thousand twenty-six. And then you have a full week off. Um, New Year's is a Friday, and then we'd be back in business on Monday, January fourth. So that, as much as I've been slamming the calendar, which is not responsible for its own existence, but, um, that, that actually is that, that's a nice bonus there. Yep. And I think, uh, Ms. Shannon, were you going to ask about something too? Sorry, I thought you were speaking before. And then for, um, so that, I mean, it's good for the public to know this too, for, um, planning purposes too, we, we have devised various um, iterations of the calendar too about what else it could look like. So we have a lot of different things, um, that are in I guess, in, in motion, but most logically, what I reported on, um, based on the conditions that we have governing how we make calendars, that's what we're looking at for now, but we're going to keep working on it. Hopefully, we come up with something that delivers the best possible experience for our students, our staff, and of course, their families. Uh, second, for the staffing updates, just a quick one, um, we're wrapping up, uh, BCBA. That is a behaviorist, uh, interviews. Um, I will be, actually, I just got the paperwork on the final candidate sent to my office today, so I'll be interviewing that person most likely before the end of the week, and we'll look to appoint that individual, um, at the next board meeting, which is February eighteenth. Um, we also have a new staff member at PV. We've been using an agency to fill the ESL slash French position that opened up that we thought we had filled, but then, um, found out that the state was not going to continue to practice of allowing us to use retirees to fill, hard to fill positions. Um, so we did have to end up outsourcing because we did not receive any qualified candidates. Um, unfortunately, when people are outsourced, um, they, they, they tend to be very fluid and, uh, that person departed, but the replacement, um, Phil Reddine is doing a great job. I will say, I, I actually visited the class and had a chance to interact, uh, quite a bit with the kids who as English language learners, I was so proud of them. They demonstrated tremendous courage, and, uh, I, I love seeing that fearlessness as they were exploring language and clearly enjoying their time with their, the new teacher. Um, and then it's already been approved. Uh, one of our French teachers, um, is going to be pursuing a different, um, career opportunity, uh, and so we will have an opening coming up in a little bit less than sixty days. Uh, Dr. O'Keefe and Mr. Hayes are already working on exploring options. Um, because obviously, we need to fill the position with somebody who's certified and qualified. And the market is not exactly flush with candidates who are appropriately certified in French, so, um, we, we're going to have to get pretty creative, but it is something that we're currently working on. And if you know anybody who is certified to teach French, who you happen to think is a very nice person, please feel free to put them in touch with me soon. Any questions about staffing? All right. I was kind of talking at you rather than with you with some of these updates, but, um, the last one too, I just want to share. Um, I had a meeting on, um, Monday of last week, and this is regard, regarding shared services. Um, one of our colleagues, um, the Lincoln Park Interim Superintendent, reached out to me as well as, uh, Superintendent from Booton and Montville, uh, to start to explore some opportunities for how we can share services. Um, it's nothing formal. This is kind of a de facto group. But what we're looking at i- is whether we can find savings and how we transport kids to the academies. If we're sending one student to the Dance Academy at Morris Knowles and we're passing through either Booton or Montville to get there. What if the two districts combined to share that transportation cost? And we're also looking at things for out-of-district placements. It gets to be very, very expensive transporting students to placements that are outside of our community. And we'd like to find ways if if we can partner with Booton, if we can partner with Lincoln Park, or if we can partner with with Montville. So it was a really good preliminary conversation. I gotta say, good good group of guys that came up with some some really. What I thought was some some great ideas. Nice when you get to listen to other people share their thoughts. One of our next steps is that we're going to look to have the respective directors of special education meet together. We have that meeting scheduled, not for this week, but the one thereafter. And then our final step in terms of really trying to bring people together is going to have the business administrators meet. So after we get the student services director started, we're going to look to get the BAs, because the BAs can really manage a lot of the transportation ideas. And I should have mentioned too, student services directors, we're looking at too, if schools have programs that might have seats in them. So if we have a student who might be trending towards an out-of-district placement. I would rather the student goes to an out-of-district placement that's in one of Montville's public schools as opposed to a private provider. Because I feel like there are greater procedural safeguards there. I feel like there there are certifications that we know are in place. So we're we're exploring those types of avenues too. And it actually ties in pretty nicely with the pre-K expansion that we're looking to take, undertake in this district. But also to look at, are there programs that we could offer that could also become revenue generating, that could help some of our neighbors? And of course, help us.
So, Dr. Portis, is that something that's already, is there like a a rule in place that that's allowed? Or is it something you would say, hey, we have an idea, and then the state has to approve it, or is it send and receive?
It's, it's a great question, because I I feel like everything we do is so regulated. And we, there is an Ed Services Commission, so transportation is covered by by the ESC, but that's a much more formalized process. What we're looking to do is to be able to say, I'm driving through your town.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. The out-of-placement solutions that you're saying, if you can get somebody.
Oh, that, that's what I'm. Yeah. Oh, great question too. That that's totally legit. So like even when when I was still at at Hillview and we had the program there for emotional regulation impairment. We actually did put it out to other, other districts in the county that if they had students who were in that age group with with similar type needs, that they could go to our program. And and as Mr. Gibbs was mentioning, there there are set prices for what they have to pay. And I will say, it's very attractive if if another district is sending a student to Paquannick and the cost is thirty-nine thousand. That's a relative bargain compared to what some of the private schools charge, which is ninety thousand or or more than that. So back back to your question, because there would be FFA implications there as well, but we don't need a specific send and receive agreement. There's somebody seated a little bit to my right who would guide us a little bit more as we get more into the fine details. And I don't, I don't mean Mr. Senic, but I do mean Ms. Murchie, but.
Yeah, it's definitely not me.
Yeah. Although Danielle knows a lot about this too.
Uh, Ridgefield and Bergen County does. They take in a lot of students from other public schools that they've they've made a really big program, so it is doable. And it is, you know, one of the other benefits is for those students to still have general education opportunities.
Yep. Absolutely, and that's another benefit. And thank you for bringing that up, that there are, with an education in a public school building, there are better mainstreaming opportunities. And and even with transportation too, one of the superintendents brought it up. It's like, if a kid's just traveling in a in a van, more or less by him or herself, wouldn't it be nice to have an age-appropriate peer? You know, at least have some conversation, unless they're like my kids in the car, which is, put the earbuds in and.
Dr. Portis, on on the transportation, is the idea to kind of identify what routes and students need to go with different, and then are, is that something that the districts are going to run that? Are you going to go to the ESC and say, hey, we have these students, and can we create a bus route for this, or?
Yeah, the 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 short answer, and I don't intend to sound cagey, is it depends. So if it's something that ESC is already providing, we're not going to try to snake them on it like we're going to continue to use them as our provider. But if there are certain routes that that we've had to, that we've had to staff, or that we have a private vendor, and and we can better provide it even with private vendor by combining with another district. We're going to realize the savings. It won't be an exact fifty percent savings, because you're not going to, you know, it's not like there are kids who live right on two eighty-seven. But but we're we're optimistic is that we can find ways to save with one another. And worrying discussions too, you have to be very mindful of how you share information and making sure that as as we do talk about what the needs are, that we're being very careful to withhold any private identifiers. We're going to be talking about age groups as opposed to age-specific and focusing on needs as opposed to any specific identifiers for the kids. But I I admit I get excited about pretty much everything, but I'm I'm I am really excited for this because.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, and and yeah, and it's great. And it was, it was just, it was like a casual conversation. We were at one of our county meetings, and Bob Mooney from Lincoln Park just kind of brought up, he's like, hey, you guys ever thought of doing something like this? No, but I wish I had, but but now now we're on it, so pretty excited for it. And any other questions?
All right. All right, moving on to CIS, we have four items under CIS, a curriculum committee meeting that we had, and Ms. Esposito is going to give us an update. High impact tutoring grant, upcoming PD half-days, and the tech expo attendance, which I heard great things about, so I can't wait to talk about that.
Okay, sorry, let me just pull up my notes. So we had a curriculum meeting via Zoom. It was Mrs. Vansicle, Dr. Portis, myself, Mr. Cerise, Mr. McSweeney, and Mr. Senic. The objective of the meeting, I apologize, my notes are in backup. They were just late. So it was open discussion on curriculum. Mrs. Vansicle wanted to get a pulse of of, you know, a pulse on any questions, concerns, ideas, comments, anything that the board really wanted to share, and anything that we hear throughout the community. So it was, I I thought it was a really good discussion. Some key topics, you know, obviously raising test scores, focus on what what works, how to get results, differentiated instruction. I think that it really sounds like Mrs. Vansicle is even more, even more so using the data to really identify those deficits and and targeting those skills. She has a great background in math, so I think it's a clear asset to our our district, so that was really great. She has a lot of great ideas. We discussed shared assessments rather than PLCs, using some time, using the PLC time for staff to break down the data, determine the deficit areas and where they go from there. As well as discussing common assessments, benchmarks, making sure they're all across grade levels. So that was really great. Rating. So we did discuss grading more so at the older grade level in terms of being consistent with performance. So a student who could possibly get a two on, let's say, the AP exam should be getting, should be earning a B, right? Or if you're getting an A, you're earning an A in an AP class or an honors class, you should be, what do we say, Dr. Portis, like a three or a four?
So it's, well, if you're if you're getting a five on an AP, you you should be performing at an A level in the class. Four on the AP, and and this, there are no hard and fast rules, but generally, those students should be most likely earning As as well.
Yes.
You know, you get a three, you're still passing the AP, and you're getting most likely college credit for it. And and there, you know, grades are most likely not being A. But but it is, it you you do look for some type of alignment. It's never going to be perfectly aligned, but you do aspire to some type of consistency.
There just shouldn't be a large discrepancy between between what you're possibly getting on the AP exam and what your grade is, right? Like that, that's that's kind of what we were discussing, and does that make sense?
Totally makes sense. In a perfect world, that the correlation should be there, you know, not, it's taking out behavior and.
True, very true.
Because you can have a brilliant kid who does incredibly well on the test because they sit and listen, but they don't do anything in class, which is not typical, I would. I don't want to say it's typical, not typical, I don't know, but yes, I totally understand the correlation.
I think there was just, you know, there was discussion in terms of there's a fine line between overinflating grades and making it too challenging to receive a higher grade, right? So there was a fine line, so that was, there was discussion in terms of that, because that is something I think that we hear about in the community. You know, addressing some systematic concerns with grading mindset. We talked about possibly like grading opportunities for teachers to to meet and discuss grading, grading procedures, right? We discussed more about math, really interested to see how our students who have, who started using the Ready Math Program to see what their, you know, how much, how that is going to help us in math in general, to see how those kids who've had it since kindergarten on, how they're going to do when they get to middle school and the high school. Discuss conquer math. Differentiating instruction in small group in math. How do we improve math test scores? You know, are we looking, do we need to get a textbook? This is something that we've discussed, I think, for several, for a while. But I I feel like Anne Marie is really on it and really looking at the data to determine what what we need or what the district needs. However, she, I got a lot of good feedback. I thought it was good feedback in regard to conquer math. Yeah, yeah, so that that was good, because not only did the district invest money in that, but the teacher spent a lot of time there. And that's, you know, you want to see their time being used productively so that they're getting something out of it. So that was, that was really good. We discussed professional development in terms of five oh fours in bringing something, something to the district. So there's a little bit more continuity of a five oh four, the requirements of five oh four and the federal legalities of five oh four. We also brought it back to literature again. Positive feedbacks in regard to the reading choice options, which I think, when did, when did we start that? Three years ago? Two, three years ago?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't have the exact timeline, but it's it's about two years, yeah.
Yeah, so that was something, you know, Dr. Sheridan really pushed for, and that was great. However, we did discuss auditing the common reading novels, right? Update some of those those novels in the grades. I do, I was thinking about it. I think maybe, can we maybe survey the students a little or something or get some feedback? I mean, I'm not saying, again, I would never ever want to get rid of some of these books, but I do think that that updating some of them, getting some feedback from the kids, seeing about what they might want to read, would be beneficial too. And then Panther Period, we discussed Panther Period. I dropped the ball on this. I will get it to you, Dr. Portis. There was, I went to a curriculum meeting in Bergen County for work, and there was a district that presented a program very similar to our Panther Period. And they have this book that they use to help them with study skills, with organizational skills, with some critical thinking that looked really great, and they've gotten a lot of great feedback and a lot of growth with their kids. They do it in like fifth or sixth grade. So I do have to get that to Mrs. Vansicle and Dr. Portis, but I, which I will do. Are there any questions? I know I went pretty fast.
Danielle, I just, thank you for, sorry, I'm over here. Thank you for being so comprehensive. I just wanted to say that, and when I was reading through your notes over the weekend, I totally agree. And it resonated with me when you wrote like, this takes time to disaggregate the data, like the data takes time to break apart meaningfully. And I, when I was at school boards, I mean, granted, it was friends of mine, but the WeHawk and administration put on a session on using AI to disaggregate your data for you. And they had some amazing strategies, and because it really does take a long time to dump data in there and, but they were doing some awesome things. And I'll get the list of prompts from them in the presentation, because it might be a worthwhile PD for teachers or leadership, whatever, to say like, how can I use this and make it faster? Because they were literally dumping data in there, and it was like, here's the key trends in this, and here's what's going on, and here's some strategies we can use, because it really does take lots of time. So I'll get that and send it over. It was an awesome presentation.
Okay, thank you. That would be awesome. I, you know, Anne Marie definitely are, Mrs. Vansicle and Dr. Portis really speak to the data. So I I do think, I think the shared assessment periods are going to be really helpful. I also think it helps if our kids know what the data is, and they like know how to look at their own data and say, well, clearly, I'm I'm not doing this right, or I'm missing this aspect. How do I fix this? So that might be something as well. That's great. Thank you, Tina.
And yeah, now I'll just add too, Mrs. Vansicle sent me some notes as well. But as I was listening to that exchange, even before it too, what I, what I get so excited about is when there's this open exchange of ideas across school districts. I think one of the good things about the pandemic response, and those are words that aren't often used together, is that cross districts, we learn to get out of our silos and to start sharing with one another and getting ideas and and applying them. And then from what Ms. Ikae was talking about, I really appreciate it, because you're taking things that you you picked up in a professional development, and you're readily applying them. And that's, I'm going to get into the PD from Anne Marie's notes in a little bit, but it's it's, we really want our 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 staff members as well as ourselves to pick up things in our professional development and be able to implement them right away. It's not just abstract ideas like, hey, isn't this wonderful in theory, but things that are really strong in practice. So I'm pretty enthusiastic for that. And then to to Ms. Shannon's point too, about the students who you know are, they they've got content mastery, and they turn in nothing. They're so hard to grade, because I can tell you, as a as a former teacher of AP students, it it it's maddening. And you'd have this kid getting a D who was brilliant, and you, and and I used to say like, I can only grade the work that's given to me. And if I'm not getting anything, it's it's very hard. But well, I think that the idea of revisiting some some shared assessment time for our our staff members is really valuable. Having worked in in places, including this one, where we had some grading calibration time. We we would have students writing a shared across classes, they would be writing a similar, if not identical, essay prompt. And then we would be using rubrics that were identical to assess. And Brian might assess a student, and then I would assess a student, and then we would look to see how our scores aligned. And some really, really loaded, sorry, not loaded, but really rich conversations that were very content-heavy and really engaging were born out of that. So hopefully, we can start to set up some opportunities for our staff to be able to do that. And and one thing too that Mrs. Vansicle wanted me to mention is that she'll be setting up open chat meetings over the next few months for families to have opportunities to get to know her and also to share their thoughts. So what we kind of envisioned is almost like coffee chats, where you could take half an hour and 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 meet with Mrs. Vansicle. She's really interested in getting input from the community, and I I think people, if they sit and talk to her, will be very engaged and really excited about what she's bringing to the table as well. Good stuff there. I'm going to read from, bless you, I'm going to read from the notes that she provided, which are actually in a fairly small font, so I'm going to be hitting my glasses. So in conversation she had with the teachers and principals, appears that last year's high-impact tutoring program was well-received. This year, we received a little over eight thousand dollars in additional grants for high-impact tutoring. Purpose of the grants to provide intensive tutoring in ELA and/or math for grades three and four students at all three elementary schools. These sessions are required to run outside school hours, and this tutoring program will run from about March seventeenth till May second. Interestingly, St. Patrick's Day is my birthday. We are currently accepting letters of interest from teachers who would like to participate as tutors, so we're currently in the process of staffing it. Getting into the weeds of it, the requirements of the grant are very specific, as a small groups can only accommodate one to three students, and they must meet at least three times per week. This will allow us to serve approximately twenty-seven students in total across the three schools. We utilize a number of criteria to identify students for the program. As soon as students are identified for the program, parents' guardians will be notified so that we can get permission for students to attend. I mean, any questions about the high-impact tutoring grant? It is third and fourth. Yep.
We received eight thousand this year. Do you recall what we received last year?
I do not know, but I can find out. It was definitely more than a grand. It was definitely more than a grand.
And you had enough teachers in-house that wanted to do it?
Yeah, la- last year we had it and, and I, I have a feeling we'll, we'll get it again. They really seem to enjoy it. And I think what's, what's fun for them is really do have small groups and, and you can, you can make some really great gains when you're working with. Two, three kids, so.
Uh, cause I know that, um, that grant was also allowing for outside professional services, but it's so great that our teachers wanted to do it.
Yep.
Okay, that's great to hear.
Yeah, and, and, um, s- something that's, that's good to mention publicly as well as, as I think it's really important that we also. Um, we train our teachers to be able to be tutors as well. Uh, and there are, there are, there are. Multiple reasons for that. One is it's, it's a, it's a great side hustle for teachers to have where they're able to make extra money, whether they're tutoring. In this community or if they're traveling to other communities. Uh, but it's, it's a really good way to pick up some extra cash. And while you're doing it, really refine your craft. Um, as somebody who was a, an in-home SAT tutor for about a decade. I learned so much about teaching and assessment from doing that, that I think it really made me a much better. Teacher and a much fuller educator. So I, I very much prefer having our people doing it rather than bringing in. An, an outside vendor. And it's good for our kids to see our teachers in, in that light as well. Cause they might get familiar with teachers who they didn't know. Especially two of the third grader, maybe they form a relationship with one of the fourth grade teachers who's providing the tutoring. So. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited for that one too. I think that's now twelve things I'm excited for. The list will grow. I know. Well, I can always watch the video, which I try to avoid doing. Hopefully, actually, I'm going to watch the video, the part early on where I sounded inarticulate. I think Mr. Shea will conveniently edit that out for me. I, I had a double thumbs up. Thank you. All right. Upcoming PD half days, uh, one of which is tomorrow and the other one is March fourth. For those of you scoring at home, March fourth is not only a date, it's also a sentence. So we have two, that wasn't in her notes, by the way. That was, that was me. We have two half day professional development sessions left for the rest of the school year. A few of the topics that will be covered include. MTSS training for all K to five staff members from Magnolia Consulting and Linkit. Uh, MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support. This is something that could, um, take the place of what we currently have for RTI and INRS. Which has been an ongoing conversation for as long as I've been in this district, um, trying to further refine that to get something that's efficient and effective. And really empowers teachers with, uh, better strategies to differentiate and also assess, uh, individual student growth levels. Uh, the second bulleted item is world language training from creative language class for grade six through twelve teachers. Uh, data analysis meetings on winter benchmarks, articulation meetings across many content areas, including one for our ELA. Humanities and business teachers in grade six through twelve, focusing on addressing the standards for informational text, research and citations. And argumentative writing, grading articulation meetings and math and science for grade six and twelve. If she was listening, uh, foundational reading skills in grades K to two, K through two. Five oh four updates and strengthening writing of students' goals and objectives and five oh fours and IEPs. Finally, uh, Ms. Jennifer Bastelone from the high school will run a training for our school counselors on understanding school avoidance. And another in implementing trauma informed support. We've gotten some really good feedback about Ms. Bastelone's presentations. And, um, Mrs. Vansco also added, we appreciate all the teachers, staff members, administrators who are leading training sessions. And we certainly look forward to these days of learning. Any questions about the professional development? It probably would have sounded better if she was reading it, but doing the best, doing the best I can. And then finally, uh. She included something about Texpo, um, which is an annual event. Mrs. Vansco attended, as did Mr. Foglio, as did our friend in the back, Mr. Shea. From her notes, there are many great sessions, mostly on AI, and we are coming back with some ideas to share with colleagues. And a nice note too, and I'll put Matt kind of on the spot, but he's, you're very rapidly becoming Mr. AI in this area.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Uh, yeah, I went, I've been to so many AI workshops in the last three months. I, it's like, I feel like it's all I do these days. But, uh, but I sat in on five different AI workshops last week alone. Um, and of course, even the keynote's kind of focused on it a little bit. So it is definitely the hot topic. Everyone in the States trying to kind of figure out how it helps and supports education. Uh, and their learners, how it can level the playing field and make, uh, curriculum more accessible, how it can save time for teachers. Um, for the, the number of people that sit on our AI team here in Paquonic, you know, we've started to explore some of those topics, but there's schools that. Have figured it out and have been doing it for a year or two. There's some that are struggling with it. You know, I feel like we're kind of in the middle of the pack. So. You know, the, the whole state's feeling out together and it was really great to have, uh, so, so many. Technology directors, tech coaches, superintendents sharing, you know, their successes and best practices. Uh, and I brought a lot back with me, which I, uh, summarized in notebook LM for me after I took like eight pages of notes. To share out with our administration team. So I'm trying to practice, you know, what I'm preaching about AI and trying to save time and, and, uh. You know, uh, communicate effectively. So, yeah, it was great. So thank you for sending me. Thank you for sending Mr. Foglio and, uh, Ms. Mrs. Vansical.
And thank you for being such a good sport about just being put on the spot, kind of haphazardly. So thank you for that, Mr. Shea. Um, continuing with Ms. Vansco's notes, one very impactful session was a keynote presentation by Jordan Zimmerman, who is a non-verbal autistic woman. She was a passionate educator and disability advocate. After being diagnosed as autistic at a young age. She did not receive access to augmentative communication through an iPad until the age of eighteen. The access to this technology changed the direction of Jordan's educational experience. I know, powerful. Uh, Jordan earned her bachelor's degree in education policy from Ohio University and her master's of education at Boston College. Most recently, she earned her master's of business administration at Quantic School of Business and Technology. She's a renowned speaker and the board chair of the nonprofit Communication First. She's an Apple distinguished educator and is a two-time appointee on the United States President's Committee for People with Intellectual Disabilities. From her notes to say, I had a paradigm shift while sitting in her presentation on the educational opportunities and possibilities for students with intellectual disabilities. Would be an understatement. We're grateful for the opportunity to attend conferences such as these, so that we as educators can connect, network and learn. About exciting innovations in the education community. So I was, I was really happy to hear that she had a powerful experience and, uh, and, and just. I, I could tell from her feedback, um, as well as what Matt was just talking about, that it really resonated.
Yeah. And speaking from a board member, when we hear feedback for things that we approve that. The teachers and the administration go to these events and actually bring stuff back that helps enrich the student's experience in Paquonic. It's really. Makes me happy to hear that you guys not only had a good time, but you learned something that you're going to convey that's going to help better our district.
Yeah, you never want to send somebody out, um, just for the sake of it. You, you want, you want something brought back and something meaningful coming out of it. Um, I also got one of the single greatest comments I've ever gotten as a superintendent was, uh, Mr. Foglio reported that. Walking the floor at Texpo with Mr. Shea was like hanging out with Taylor Swift. So apparently, apparently you're very popular there.
Uh, uh, we have trouble, we had trouble like walking down the hall without me, you know, shaking hands with multiple people saying. If I can add on about, uh, Jordan Zimmerman, the, the keynote speaker that, that was non-speaking. She, she was phenomenal, out of this world. Imagine presenting to six to seven hundred educational leaders in a room. Using her iPad as her augmentative communication device, um, with, with Apple in the audience to, to, to introduce her. Um, I mean, it, she was super inspiring to hear her story. You know, she, she led off with, you know, please don't feel shame or disappointment, but I, you know, this was my journey and she basically had. No assistance and was segregated from kindergarten on up until she finally got her hands on an iPad in two thousand sixteen. And then that kind of opened up her world. Um, she ended her presentation with a challenge for us educational leaders. To, to believe in our special education students, to include them as much as possible. Uh, to keep them with their peers and, and try to listen to that student's needs. It was just amazing. And then I got to, you know, we had a line afterwards to meet her. And take a selfie with her using iPads, uh, hands-free, um, uh, camera. You know, so we got to practice that and I got to ask her a couple of questions. It was, it was really awesome. And to have, uh, Mr. Foglio there, our, our director of student services. I, I think was a huge impact as well for him to bring that back to his team. So, yeah, she was really inspiring and amazing. And she, if you, I, I, I. Can send some links, but, um, she's part of the Nora Project, which is a, a organization that. Uh, tries to push inclusivity across the United States and they've created, uh, standards that they, she freely shared out. And it's on their website, standards for any school to help incorporate to, uh, in, have more inclusion in their, in their classrooms and their gen ed classrooms. So, yeah, it was awesome.
All right. Thank you. Uh, moving on to FFA, two items, an update on the seven industrial road property and a discussion on preschool tuition.
Oh yeah, I wanted to, um, show everybody the building. I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to even see the building. Uh, but this is what we're looking to, um, purchase next summer. Um, the owner wanted over three million dollars for the building. I got it down to two point seven four five based on an assessment that was provided. The board approved. And, um, we're in the process of making it happen at this point. Oops, this is too far, sorry. That's right. All right. This is actually the entrance to the building. Um. Once you walk inside the entrance, this is what the main area looks like. Now this area does not house any offices at all. This is actually the flood zone area because this building is built in a flood zone. So everything resides on the second and top floors. This is what it looks like on the second floor when you come out of the elevators. Now this is what it looks like when you're looking down the left-hand side of the wall. Obviously there are offices on both sides. The same with this, there are offices on both sides. All right. Thank you, Matt. The, uh, second floor, what we're looking to do is move the current tenants up to the top floor. And the reason we have to do that is because the state will not allow us to put the preschool in the third floor. There's a law now that they cannot be in the sec- on the third floor or any floors higher. So we have to move the tenants up. Um, in doing so, this is what we're looking to do on that second floor, which is actually create six classrooms and three offices. Now the six classrooms will be able to house ninety six students. The three offices will be an administrative office, a nurse's office and an OTPT and speech room. Well, the OTPT room, that's going to be as close as we're going to get because we're very, very close on space. Now there is area. If there is a larger area in the one classroom, which is the largest classroom, which is the one on the far right on the top. There's additional area in there. So things could be done in there. Okay. Well, OTPT is, is a, no, it's, it's an OTPT room where you can sit down with a student and just go over whatever you need to do. Exactly.
I didn't know if it was just like a straight up office where they could go and do paperwork and, and whatever else, or if this was, you know. Combined therapy office, like they're going to be practicing in there with the kids.
Right. Now there's a separate office just for the administrator, whoever that's going, they'll have their, their own office for doing paperwork and what have you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Gen.
There is an elevator there. So it's probably elevator shafters. Also, um, bathrooms for each classroom as required. Yeah, it could sub the mechanical room. There has to be a mechanical room on that floor. No, those bathrooms have to be created. But what's the nice thing about this building is everything underneath this floor is open. You can actually walk underneath it. So it's not like in a, a normal school where you'd have to drill through cement and things like that, which are huge barriers. This is an actual, an easier way of, uh, putting in bathrooms, but each, each classroom will have its own bathroom. Yes.
Just a quick, quick response to, um, if you were asking about that, that white area too, is we're going to have essentially a security vestibule built around. Where the, um, stairway and elevator are located. Um, this would be not terribly much unlike what we currently have in place when you enter any of our other physical plants. But we want to make sure that we have something that's really tight. So if somebody gets on the elevator, whether they're coming from the third floor. Or coming from that ground floor, um, we want to make sure that they have to first pass through our security check before they're granted admittance. Into the, any of the classroom or hallway spaces.
Could you get a version of this that's legible? Like this, I don't know if it's zoomed in and it's pixelating or something, but you can't really.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's zoomed in, so I can get you a better copy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. Yeah. Any other questions with the preschool?
Um, would we be having, I guess it's kind of really far in advance, but we having any of our, our security staff kind of be going there regularly?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Okay. And, and I, based on what I've seen from our security staff, I think they'll be very excited. Um, they, they tend to really enjoy interacting. With some of the little kids. Um, so I, I have a feeling that, that this will be a, a, um, an appealing shift to, to do walkthroughs here. And, and obviously we would open it up to, uh, police department does a walkthrough in every building every day. We would, um, certainly welcome having them doing it here as well. Um, and we're, we're still working on coming up with a name too. I think the preschool center is lacking in creativity, but it's, it's pretty accurate. So we're.
We just discussed about naming stuff after, uh, you know, where we had the whole discussion about naming buildings after past people. So. Another chance to get this to use.
Well, there, there, there was, I, I will admit, this is letting you guys into some insider information. But, um, there was a joking name of the Michael G. Portis Center for. Learning opportunities for small people who want to learn and play. So I don't think that one's really going to, going to take, but that, that is.
I would vote for that.
The working names for it.
So the, the parking lot is the top of the drawing? Correct?
Yes.
So none of these, nothing that's there now would be able to be salvaged. You have to just basically gut the whole floor, then relay out everything and. Go underneath roughing all the piping and.
Yep.
Probably heat trace it because it's cold under there and.
It's all going to be redone. Exactly. Is there really? I think it's a two thousand six. It's not that old.
Building is one elevator for the building.
I'm sorry.
There only one staircase and one elevator for the entire?
No, there's two. There's one elevator, there's two staircases.
Yeah. And, um, if you look to the, to the far left, like if you were walking down that's, that hallway to the far left, that'll take you. So we do have to have two different egress routes. Um, so they can get out safely in the event of an emergency or a drill. And then one of my conditions, and Ron Lucas is right on board with it, is that stairwell to the second floor. So it has to essentially be a fortress getting into the second floor because, um, there are tenants on the third floor as well as the board offices. There's a different level of security required for something like that. This has to be, um, the, the best of our security. And I did say it to Ronnie somewhat jokingly, but seriously as well, um, when I was a freshman at Villanova, it was the first time we ever had a co-ed dorm. Dorm I lived in, second through fifth floor was male, first floor was female. That first floor was a fortress. Um, there was no way that you were, you were getting in there without the proper credentials or certainly not after hours. Um, but that's an example, I'd say, like there, there are ways of making sure that people can get out of the second floor easily. Again, if there's a fire drill, if there's any type of situation where they feel need to evacuate, um, they can do so easily. People can't get back in.
Being that it's in a, um, a flood zone, I imagine we have to have insurance to be able to fix the building in case anything happened.
Absolutely.
The, the electrical service and all that stuff will be on the second floor then? So that we wouldn't have a gear down at the, that could get wet, something like that. So.
It's all been, it's all been, uh, town approved prior. So it's, it's nothing new. Yes.
Is there any security, uh, if you want to finish answering that question, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, man. Um, for that first floor, it was very frustrating for me because, um, the first floor is not, it's, it's uninhabitable. Um, it's literally a basement that's not submerged. Part of it actually, you know, it's a little bit of a hill, so part of it is. Um, but the, the state wouldn't recognize it as, as a basement. They only recognized it as a ground floor. Which means that the second floor is the only floor in which we can put the pre-K.
which means that the second floor is the only floor in which we can put the pre K. So then what I, I guess they're classifying as the third floor, you can't have pre K up there. Now, if there came a point in time where we wanted to have a learning program for older students, we could house that on the third level safely. But for the purposes of what we can do right now, this is the only floor that's available with pre K. But I also point this out in relationship to your question that if that area does get hit by a flood, that whole first floor is built to absorb the hit.
Yeah, when I visited the building, I mean, there's nothing there. It's essentially like a crawl space. It's a, it's a big crawl space, but the, the only thing I was really talking about was like the drywall and the lobby. If there's really anything that would get damaged.
That would get damaged, absolutely. Yeah.
So two questions unrelated from one, one another. First question, when doing the building on the second floor here or remodeling on the second floor, are the tenants going to be able to still use the building?
Yes, they're actually going to get moved first.
Okay.
Right.
And then are there any security requirements as far as background checks and whatnot for the existing tenants or the tenants that will be in the building when the children are there, or we can't do that?
No, you can't do that. There is, this, this section of the building is totally secure. Okay, it's not as if anybody from the outside can just walk in. Okay? The tenants on the third floor, top floor, have to have access for their clients. You cannot restrict that. Okay. Now, for the board, when I get to the board office, that's the next slide. You'll see that we do have security for the board office. Okay, it is quite, quite genuine. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, with the additional, with the space on the third floor, obviously, we have tenants, they have leases. If tenants were not to renew their lease, are we looking to then rent those out again? Or are we going to look to utilize those for the district?
No, I think we'd like to utilize those for the district. Yeah, definitely. But we have to honor the leases. Yeah, right.
How, how long are their leases? Do we, is it?
They vary.
They vary. Okay.
Yeah.
Gordon, I don't know if you're going to get to anything about the exterior later. I'll save it.
We really, we're going to talk too much about exterior tonight because I want to get these plans. Either the board says their agreement to move forward or we stop here. So I really, the exterior really doesn't have too much to do other than the playground.
Well, that's what I was going to ask about a perk test or something for the playground.
Well, we're not going to have a perk test for a playground. We will have a playground.
Okay. Like.
Playground, you don't fade away or have issues with perks, but you know, if it's necessary and required by the DOE, absolutely. We will do everything according to the way it's supposed to be done. Correct?
I have one more flood question. If this is the wrong time in the presentation, let me know. So something happens and this part of town floods terribly, right? And we cannot access the building. What's the, the contingency plan for the six classrooms of children that are now potentially displaced?
Well, obviously, school will be closed for them temporarily until we could find other space for them throughout the district. Now, floods typically don't last months, you know, but who knows? That is a possibility. It's a concern. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's something that, you know, we, we should have more in-depth plan if it is something that extends beyond a week. I think the, the longest we've seen in my time here, and this goes back to two thousand seven, was getting knocked out for two or three days, which is still, it's, it's, it's a disruption to be sure, but it's something that, that we can bounce back from. So we'll, we'll, we'll take a look to it, like, what, what is the, what's the general tenancy in this particular part of town? How long would we recently project being out based on past? I mean, you know, the past is a great predictor. It doesn't tell you everything you need to know. But yeah, to have backup options is really important. You know, it's throwing up our hands and saying, I don't know. Won't, won't do the trick. So that's something we'll, we'll we'll apply the umbrella theory, which is if you carry an umbrella, it rarely rains, but we'll, we'll make sure that we have something so that we can accommodate the needs of our young learners and the families.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the preschool? No? Matt? Yes. All right, this is actually a, a design of the new board office with the existing tenants. We're looking to maintain five tenants and obviously the board office to allow each staff member to have their own office. Where there's also a safety vestibule or a man trap, whatever you want to call it, to keep the board office safe. But there is no man trap or any security other than that for the tenants because there is none now. We can't restrict them from their clients coming into the building. We're hoping that the tenants will leave soon, but we cannot force them out. So that's where we're at with that. Are there any questions with respect to the board office and the tenants?
There's the, the rent money from the tenants that are going to be going to Austin.
Absolutely. Yes, a revenue source. Yes, a revenue source. We're losing a revenue source of the current board office, starting, starting January first, twenty twenty five. Fifty five thousand a year, but we're losing. With this, we're gaining back thirty. So we're, we're not getting back to fifty five, but we're getting close. Any other questions?
Is the, is the elevator going to be equipped with like a key card access? So that way, if the tenant can't get off on the second floor, they can only go to like the third floor?
They will not be able to, well, if they got off on the second floor, there's a man trap there. So they can't get past that man trap.
There's a man trap on the second floor or the third floor?
Yeah.
There's one on both.
On both, yeah.
Okay.
And the second one.
You go back to the second floor and show me that, please?
And, and the second is the priority in terms of, in terms of man trap. Obviously, we want to have it on the third as well, but th- th- this one involves the safety and security of our, of our kids and their teachers, so. Yeah, that's non-negotiable. Right.
Is there one or two elevators?
It's one elevator. Any other questions? No, you're welcome. Well, I'm not done. There's more. All right. In talking numbers, because they gave me a budget of how much this would cost. And I did not like their number because I don't believe it's true. So I've asked them to do a complete drawing of this. Once the board says, yes, let's go ahead with this. And I think you probably will. Then they're going to start working on the complete drawings, of which the contractor will give me an estimate as to what it's going to cost. And we were talking different timeframes. We were talking different numbers as far as prevailing wage and how we're going to use prevailing wage. I explained how I intend to pay for this. And I have a feeling, the way things are going, it's going to be probably done in a three-phase process. The first phase would be obviously to move the tenants upstairs because they've got to be out of the way for us to move any, to do anything on that second floor. My thing is to run that through a capital lease this year, given the number is pretty small. It's only about three hundred thousand to fit them up upstairs. And incorporate that into this year's budget. Now, for next year, I'm looking to obviously buy the building through Capital Reserve and also fit up the board office through Capital Reserve. Now, the preschool, which is the most expensive, and we're using prevailing wage, my recommendation is that we're probably going to have to go out for a referendum. We're talking a lot of money. We're talking playground also. We're talking furniture. We're talking, we were bouncing around a whole bunch of different numbers, about four hundred dollars per square foot. And that's a lot of money, you know, compared to a hundred dollars per square foot, non-pervailing wage. So you know what I'm talking about.
I think it's probably going to be more than four hundred dollars.
You're probably right, but that's why I need actual, actual numbers. I need to know where we're at. So if the board is in agreement to move forward to get the full-blown plans, we'll do that tomorrow. That'll start tomorrow. And hopefully, in the next few weeks, we'll have some definite solid numbers. Any questions?
I just have one more question. I apologize. Do we have to require busing there a certain distance away because of preschool? So I guess, one, knowing that that road's a little tight with commercial vehicles and the entrance to that parking lot can be a little tight. A, can it handle the traffic of a bus and also like a morning drop off, an afternoon drop off? Has that been looked at, like some kind of traffic study?
We haven't had a traffic study yet. We want to get past this part first because obviously if it doesn't, it's not cost effective to do it. Why spend more money on the traffic stuff? That makes, you know, makes sense. Looking at the parking lot and having built schools, I think the parking lot is conducive for it. I would recommend putting another egress going out on the far end on that street. So one is coming in and one is going out rather than going in and out in the same entrance, perhaps. That would be my recommendation. Yeah, right.
And there's no light at the end of that street, no traffic light, strictly a stop sign? Is that with the town? What's the communication with the town if they decide they need a traffic light would be?
Well, the town has to approve this, so we're on the still beginning stages. We have to get town approval. We have to get DOE approval. There's a lot of work. We're at the beginning. A lot of approval.
We'll be the autonomous referendum like towards the end of the year, probably.
Okay. Yeah, we actually talked about timeframes also. I know I had originally said we could get this up and rolling probably by September twenty twenty five for the preschool. Not going to happen. And going over the different approval status, especially with the DOE, which takes forever, and I've been through that. We're talking realistically, if we're lucky, December, or excuse me, January of twenty twenty six, twenty seven, excuse me, January twenty twenty seven. That's when they could possibly open, possibly. They even said that's kind of a, this is the architects. They said even that's kind of a push. Realistically, probably September. Yeah, because the time we get the approvals by DOE, if the referendum passed, which takes six months alone, you're talking a lot of time. Yeah.
I think the biggest portion of that is the referendum.
Yes, you're right. Yeah. Any other questions?
I just hope that.
So what else do you have? You have these two plans, that's it? Is there anything else that you? Did they give you any kind of like reports or just these two plans, like these two schematics?
We have these two plans for now.
Okay.
Okay. If you want other reports later, obviously, the DOE is going to require a lot of stuff. Not from us, but from the architects. Yeah, so.
Did they perhaps give you any kind of thing in terms of like what type of facilities at the, at the building in terms of electric, whatever, that they could reuse and not have to upgrade?
No, we're not getting to that yet.
Okay.
And, and something, it's just, it's such a contrast. We really enjoyed how quickly things moved with the Veterans Wall Project. Like that was, that was unbelievable. And I, I think I said it quite a bit to people around the committee. I'm used to moving at the school of speeds, oh, sorry, the speed of schools, which is generally not very fast. And so unfortunately with this, our ambitions are, are, are there. But the reality is just the, the process is, is going to take a lot of time. And DOE is very methodical. They're, they're not going to rush anything. So there are going to be a lot of segmented steps involved with this. We'll, we'll make sure that we do everything procedurally correctly and, and ideally come up with something that, that serves what we've determined is a true need for our community, which is to expand the available, availability of pre K.
You believe the board office would be done sooner because a lease ends within a year?
Yeah, I believe so. We have to be out by February twenty twenty six.
Yeah, and it, it, the difference is too, like, this is, this is meeting the needs of adult workers where the second floor is looking at the needs of young learners and their teachers. And the third floor is a lot, it's a lot simpler. So it should be, it should be done pretty quick and it's not going to require the same DOE approvals. Like this, this is going to get hustled through.
Would that require a referendum too, the top floor?
Hey, Gordon, the, the timeline in the backup was the renovations for the third floor this summer, non-pervailing wage. And then the second floor fit out referendum next year, or as you described, by September two thousand twenty seven opening, prevailing wage.
It all depends on the numbers. I have to see what their numbers are going to be. If we own the building and we haven't fitted up the board office, it's going to be under prevailing wage. So that's going to be a difference.
Well, that's why they're going to let us fit it out without owning it on the third floor?
Well, yes, they will let us fit it, fit out the offices. Absolutely. Even our office, if we could afford to do it. But once again, I have to stay within our means of our budget, you know, in order to make this happen. So I'm trying to be extremely conservative because I don't want issues. The board doesn't want issues going down the road. So we're taking it slow. I'm in constant contract with our auditors. Make sure the numbers I'm saying are true and they're not, you know, just made up numbers. And they're in agreement. So when it comes time for audit time, there, we're all on board the same percent. Any other questions?
So what's our contingency if we get in there and we start fixing it and then the referendum does not pass?
Well, it will take time to build a preschool. We have to do it piece by. But I think at this point, we need the preschool. And I think the town is ready for them. So it all depends on how it's presented to the town. Any other questions?
I mean, worst case scenario, we could maybe fit out the second floor so it's like it could be used as an office as well. We rent it out for a couple more years and generate more money.
To build your preschool. Exactly.
So just referendums only needed for the preschool, not to purchase a building or the third floor?
No, I'm looking to purchase the building through our Capital Reserve because we have enough to do that with the SDA grant that we picked up from fourteen years ago. We're, we're in good shape. So this is the prime time to do. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you, Gordon. Appreciate it.
I, I am very excited about this.
The second item I had was the preschool tuition. In the backup, I gave an analysis as to what I felt we should increase the preschool tuition to. And just looking at the numbers as to what the actual came in versus what we've been charging, we've been undercharging for a long period of time. And now it's catching up with us. We had a loss of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a lot of money to lose on a preschool program. So I realize giving a huge jump is not always a good thing. But also, I also looked at our competitors and what they're charging. So I think we could be a little more competitive, even though we're still the best game in town, so to speak, because we are the lowest. I would recommend bringing it up to at least a five percent increase. So we're over seven thousand dollars for our full day program. So it would be up to eight thousand, over eight thousand dollars, up to eight thousand dollars. That's my recommendation. Obviously, the board has to make that decision. And we will vote on the, the eighteenth. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, looking at the numbers, we're definitely not, we're definitely not the most expensive. And even with this increase, we still wouldn't be the most expensive.
Exactly. So we can increase it more if the board has suggestion to do that.
I think, I mean, look at our waitlist, right? There's, it's going to fill. Our, we could, we could even go another, you know, we get to ten, eleven percent increase. It's still going to fill and there's still going to be a waitlist and we're, we're losing money. Exactly.
Yeah, even with an eight percent increase on this cheat, we're still below lane in some of the other towns.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I have one in private preschool right now and I have one in Paquonic preschool and using tools of the mind and hate to name drop, but Mrs. Rubino is an absolute angel. And I think it's worth every penny and then some. It's a quality program and I would pay double.
I like double.
I would, yeah.
One hundred percent.
There you go.
Yeah, I agree. I think that we should at least be on par with our neighbors for the quality program that we have. So I don't know if that works that percentage wise, but.
And when you put it in perspective of flat or decreasing state aid.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can't really put ourselves in a position to not take advantage of the opportunities that are there when people around us are charging more.
Right.
So we have to do what's correct for the taxpayer.
If you look at West Milford, West Wilford's charging five thousand for a half a day. So if we were to do maybe nine thousand to ninety-five hundred for a full day, we're still cheap. So it's something to think about, obviously. Um. Obviously, if you run through F F A, they can get, let me know what you want to do, okay?
Is there a timeframe when we would have to approve these increases?
Uh, the end of this, the board, the last board meeting of this month, we need to get it because we have to let parents know.
Okay.
Yeah, letters have to go out. Any other questions regarding tuition, preschool tuition? No? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Gordon, good job. Up next is policy, we have, believe it or not, nine things to discuss, I'm not going to go through them all. Uh, we'll just start with the policy implications of the revised memorandum of agreement with law enforcement.
They're looking at me like, what did you do in Greg? I'm like, it's not my fault.
Yeah, I I will admit, I I think I may have railroaded Mr. McSweeney into the lengthiest policy discussion that we've ever had as a as a committee of the whole. But it's not, it's not entirely my fault, we did get a very um, a very dense policy update from Strauss Esme. Uh, anybody who's having a tough time falling asleep at night, I've I've got the solution for you. So, um, the fir- first item is just that the memorandum of agreement between education, law enforcement officials uh was fairly recently revised, it was revised two thousand twenty three. Uh, but there are some ripple effects of that filter into policy, so the M O A is not an actual policy. But it has an influence on a few different policies, so. Uh, we'll see something working its way into fifty five twelve, um, which. There is a recommendation I have in there to choose option two because it's consistent with what we're doing for existing practice. Um, we see this a similar type thing happening with uh fifty five thirty three and I I just realized I don't think we linked all of them. But that's the student smoking, so that's, that's an important one to address. We're also looking at um. How law enforcement is able to access our. Uh, our cameras in an emergency situation, uh, this is something that's important to note that they can't just flip the cameras on anytime they want. Um, they are allowed, however, in a crisis situation to get access, um, this way they can follow something in real time as it's occurring. And then the last one for ninety two thirty R, I have to find my notes on that. That is the regulation for cooperation with law enforcement agencies, um, there there is an option that we're given. On page one, the superintendent or designee may de- may designate one or more law enforcement units for the district as described in the M O A. Um, to me, it just seems like common sense that if there's an emergency situation and we have multiple units who can respond, we we would want them here. Um, when we had one of our training sessions over spring break, uh, when our police had one of their training sessions, they brought in the SWAT team from Morris County. Um, we hope to never have them here for real, but it's good for them to see during training, same thing with the sheriff's department or any other agency that can support us. So really, all all the policy implications there are essentially common sense and um I. Recommend that we apply said common sense.
For uh. For fifty five twelve, the option that we're, that you're recommending is the way that it is now, correct? Uh, that's the one with the investigation of uh HIBs?
Yep, yeah, so it's it's what we're doing already, um, and it what they want to focus on is to make sure that we know and we communicate effectively that. If if something's reported to us as a HIB and there's a police investigation component to it, if we've started our investigation, it must stop. And it has to stay in abeyance until uh the police direct us that they've completed their investigation, they don't want us. Um, influencing um or otherwise um. Jeopardizing their investigation, so we we have to, we have to step aside for that and then once they give us the. The go ahead, then we resume ours and the timeline starts. Again, where it left off.
Yeah, I think that option, in my opinion, is better, uh, the other option, I believe, was you investigate everything, which I think could just lead you down rabbit holes.
Yeah.
Which potentially just wastes time.
Yep, yeah, and 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 again, we we don't want to compromise anything that's happening in a police investigation because, um, you know. Who knows, like, we're not, we're not trained in law enforcement, you know, we, we're trained in what we do, but that's not law enforcement. All right, and then for the, for the actual policies, um, the first policy that's listed there is policy twenty three sixty five, which is acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence. This is a new policy, it is one that is not yet on the books, my recommendation is that the board tables this policy until the A I plan is complete. Um, the best way I can break it down is to just point out that the A I plan is decide, is going to um be designed to be very fluid. Where um an A I policy is is a little more static, we're going to end up having to review the policy, I would say almost annually, um, but. We we were talking in our A I committee about how there really has to be this interconnectedness between the plan, which is something that. Mr. Shea is our, is our designee for determining the contents of that plan, but if there's something that he feel feels needs changing, it still has to go. Through me and then I would of course report to the board as well as the administrative team. But um I I think it's a fruitless exercise to approve a plan that. We're not quite ready to approve, um, there is something on pages two and three of the policy guide that was sent to us by Strauss Esme. That we already started breaking down in an A I committee meeting and making recommendations for the board to consider about the different options that are listed in the Strauss policy.
This to me is like the perfect opportunity for a board goal for this coming year. Because it's, it demonstrates collaboration between the administration and the board. It's something that the board can actually do because it's a policy item, so it's something that we actually have authority over. Um, it's already underway and it's going to be something that I think is a, is a full, of of a full effort to do a, uh. A good enough job to make sure that it's something that's, the policy is thorough enough to stand the test of time and to adapt the changes that are coming our way. Um, so I totally agree that we should take it off the table, put it through the committee as it already is doing and then make it a board goal.
Yeah, I agree on that, the, the, the A I committee that's been meeting, it's, the conversations are really good, we're peeling back a lot of different layers of. What's going on with A I, what it can be, what it will be, and Dr. Porter said that we're going to change it probably yearly as A I. Changes and outsmarts us. Yeah, so, um, yeah, the committee, the committee is is making good progress, but there's still a lot to go through, so definitely table, and a board goal is a great idea.
All right, uh, the, the next item is um policy fifty one eleven, which uh focuses on eligibility of resident and non-resident students. The, the changes that we saw here came out of uh recent statute involving um what districts do in terms of charging. Um, tuition for certificate staff members, um, and a potentially reduced rate, which is something that would have to be collectively bargained. Um, but also i- it it specifies um what you are able to do for non-certificated staff members. And and I was a little surprised with the statute, which I felt like was setting up almost a caste system between certificate staff members and non-certificated staff members. Um, so my, my recommendations, which are outlined in the document that's in backup, um, really focus on. Um, what, what you do for one, you don't necessarily do for all, but there has to be a level of consistency with whatever we choose to do. If the board were to move, um, to offer discount tuition to the children of staff members, I I I think it should be consistent with what's available. To all our staff members as much as the law will allow.
Yeah, I agree as well, I also think it's a great opportunity to attract teachers to the district, as you say in your recommendation.
Yes.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Portis, in reading through your recommendations over the weekend, I really appreciate, actually caste system is like the perfect phrase to describe it. Um, I mean, you guys do such a great job of celebrating all of the educators, the the specialists, the paras, everybody included, so I think it's great that. Um, this is a movement towards um treating everybody with quality, um, the one um question which I'm glad um. Board attorneys here, I wanted to ask a question about um the option two in the middle of page eight, where it says a non-resident student whose parent anticipates blah, 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 blah. Um, will be enrolled with a payment of uniform tuition amount, but. Is that automatic? Shouldn't it be like maybe if they would like to be?
So I don't have your backup, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The document, that'd be great.
It almost makes it seem like, okay, I'm going to Renton Town and I, it's will be enrolled like immediate versus they can enroll up to ten weeks prior. I know it's semantics, but. Will and may, two different things.
Yep, it 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 does say in the district will with board approval be enrolled, so it does have that little bit of wiggle room, um, and Jackie.
Yeah, it might be, it it might be more accurate statutorily to say may. Because until someone is actually physically living domiciled in Paquonic. They don't trigger the statute for mandatory residency and mandatory enrollment. Uh. I'd want to review to give you a more accurate answer and want to review the statute that's listed, which is eighteen A thirty eight dash three, just to confirm. That there hasn't been any change, but to the best of my knowledge, sitting here in this moment, the. District's obligation does to enroll a student does not simply arise by nature of a execution of a contract for sale.
Gotcha, thank you. Other than that, it looks great, love your recommendations, Dr. Portis.
Oh, thanks, yeah, and something else that that's on on the next page from that is we've had traditionally in our policy that. If a student's family moves out of the district, um, after September first of their senior year, student is allowed to stay on in district um to graduate. And we have not charged tuition for that, um, that is no longer permitted statutorily. Um, I do recommend that we still allow the twelfth grade student to stay, um, but we will have to change um. To honor the statute and and charge tuition. Similarly, um, we had something in that if a student in grades K through eleven moved on or after March thirtieth, they would be allowed to attend. Also free of charge, um, that is something that also we need to revisit. And I'd recommend that we not implement that change until two thousand twenty five, twenty six, regardless of what happens with policy. So if a family moves out of the district on April fifteenth, um, when they started the school year, that policy was in place. And I think it's terribly unfair to tell somebody, oh, no, we changed that, um, it's, people like to use the analogy of changing the rules after the game has started. It's exactly what it is and and I I would have, I would have a very difficult time being a party to that.
So for this option here, we would have, or we, what you're proposing is a student who is in grade blank or in their graduation year. Student who is in grade K through eleven or in their graduation year.
Well, we've had it so that the the consideration for K eleven was um March um thirtieth. And on, I guess we could do that, like we could say a student is in grade K through eleven or in their graduation year of the school. Um, because that, that first choice, I I actually don't love the phrasing because it says who is in grade blank and in their graduation year, well, I guess. Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't like the coordinated conjunction as it's used there, but um, it's.
Couldn't we just say K through twelve, isn't it the same as K through eleven and graduation?
Yeah, as I, as I tell people when they ask me about Strauss, legally, they're very sound, as writers. They're good attorneys.
You say K through twelve, though, you don't get to explain what a coordinated conjunction is.
This is true, it's true. Yeah. This is true, this is true, um, and then as far as the um the options for students um to be eligible to attend. Um, if they're currently on a visa, um, I just put in a little explanation too, I hope I did at least about the difference between the visas. Um, and and F one visas for full-time students, um, and then a J one visa is generally for students who are part of an exchange program. And then I saw that there was also an opportunity um to include a little bit um of a change. To help people understand something about residency, um, a recommendation that I put in and I added this to backup. I think I added it either, either yesterday or earlier this morning. But there's something in the first paragraph about removal of currently enrolled students where it says newly discovered information. It's kind of broad, so I thought if we added newly discovered i- information about ownership or student domicile pursuant and then and so forth. But I think that that's important because sometimes we we find out that um a house is just sold, um, and obviously that's a change in in ownership. But also student domicile i- is important as well because, um, even if the the family owns a house in in town, it doesn't mean they're necessarily living in it. So it's just important to have that distinction between ownership and domicile. And then there are all kinds of complexities too, I do get questions from people about residency, um, where we we have to honor what's in a custody agreement. Um, you know, we have, we do have tuition paying students who live in other communities, so there's a lot there, but I think that that language helps us. And then there was one other thing I think will help us for um. When students are enrolling, uh, whe- whether they're enrolling as kindergartners or if they're moving to town. To help give some guidance on the proof of eligibility as well as uh proof of rev- residency. And um our neighbors in in Pompton Lakes have something on their website that I think is sensational. Where they break out into two columns, um, the the best documents to provide and it's very similar. If anybody's gone for the real I D, which is is probably about as much.
They're getting your passport, same, yeah.
Exactly, like it it's, the the process itself is excruciating, but it, but it's made so much clearer because I just need to fill in these lines. Um, the one question I did get is we we can put this on our website as a matter of practice, easy. Um, the question that that came up and Mr. McSweeney is asking this, and it's a great question, is can we include this in policy? Or are we overstepping with something that's limiting in terms of what can be provided? Jackie, I know I'm putting you on the spot with this.
That's okay, so you're only overstepping to the extent that you use it as a bright line rule rather than a manner of practice. Meaning that boards of education in New Jersey cannot mandate that an individual provides certain documentation to demonstrate residency, they can. Mandate that documentation be provided, but they can't dictate which documents they will accept, so you can't say driver's license, you can't say a particular set of documents. Using this as a guide may provide an individual who is trying to register their child with exactly that information. But you couldn't say the way the D M V says you need six points and they have to be two from this column, two from that column and two from the last column.
Got it, that 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 actually, I should say actually, that that really helps a lot, so I I appreciate it. Um, and it, I think it helps clarify things for for Greg and me, um, we're going to, we're going to look to meet either later this week or or hopefully next week. Um, to go over all the different implications of this discussion as well as these notes with the policy committee, so we can be prepared for our first reading. Um, at the March third meeting, so.
And Dr. Portis, if there's anything that you'd like my office to review before you put it up for a first reading, I'm more than happy to do that.
Oh, yeah, you 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 can expect to get peppered with a few uh, a few documents over the next week or two. But I re- I really appreciate the um, the. The support there and 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 I like to, you know, even with what was on Pompton Lakes and and I I work with Pompton Lakes on on a. Handful of different things, it's something Mrs. Vansicle found for me and it just, it's, to to me, it just lends a level of clarity. And then they also have a special circumstances form and we would have something similar to that as well. Okay, and any questions about residency? And that, that's a big one and and I think the the clearer that we can make it, the more we help our community and also the more we help our residency team with whom I meet every, every month. Um, and it's, I think it's going to make our work better, it's also going to make the experience for our greater community better. All right, the the next policy um is fifty four sixty, which is high school graduation. Um, there were a lot of different options um that we had to fill in about the required credits. Um, that are needed for a student to earn a degree from our high school. Um, the state does have minimum requirements in, but does provide some flexibility to districts to go over the minimum. Um, we are over the minimum with the required credits to graduate from the high school. I did bring this up uh to Mr. Hasler and he he was pretty happy with the one forty that's in place. And as I see it, um, he runs the school, I'll take care of running the district and he can run the school. And as I see it, um, he runs the school. I'll take care of running the district and he can run the school. And um I did challenge him on it, which is standard practice. He was able to argue it. Um, I I felt it was sound, so. Um, I'd like to keep the one forty in place and then everything else is outlined and lines up pretty cleanly with with. Yeah, state minimums. But I like the flexibility it gives us for um different four credit programs. Um, and I say four, I mean. Not F O U R, but F O R. I think that was it for. Oh, and it's just this is just kind of a snarky aside, but um on page eleven, um, there's a strike through for the word park. Uh, which is no longer the assessment that we administer. It's good practice. Just don't don't use product names in policy because products tend to come and go. Park, yes.
I agree with the district paying for the bi-literacy seal as well. Um, I know we had this discussion either last year or the year before, but. Um, since that discussion being at the graduation, you see on the program, the students that have earned it and it. It it provides, as far as my opinion, some kind of incentive for a student to go through that, knowing that someone's gonna pay for them to get that certification.
And and something I glossed over too, and actually you made me slow down there, which I appreciate, is uh the FAFSA requirement, which is a state requirement. It's it's in policy as well, so we're consistent with that. All right, it's high school graduation. The next policy is policy fifty-five sixteen, which is the use of electronic communication and recording devices, which is now being. Amended to be use of electronic communication devices, so it's no longer and recording devices. Um, this is one that needs a significant overhaul. Strauss does not have a dedicated cell phone policy. This kind of covers it. Cell phone policies are woven into quite a few others. Um, so I'm expecting a much larger revision of of this policy. So it's a semantic shift. I mean, the fact that this still addresses pagers slash peepers. I mean, come on, so um. I I would in in ideally, I would like to get a committee going um to examine. Um, what we should be doing with cell phone policies and this actually takes me into regulation fifty-five sixteen, which does not currently exist. Um, this is one that I also recommend that we table. Right now, we're we're governed in our. Um, our practice about cell phone use, smart watch use. We don't have anything about smart glasses use. Um, and the other one that that Matt's talking about is these AI pins where you can get AI answers from PIN. I guess brooches are gonna make a comeback, but um I I do feel that we should have a committee. Um, a community wide committee to focus on cell phone use and social media use. And I have had initial conversations with the town health officer about um about getting his organization involved because it is a mental health initiative. Um, and it's 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 really important. Um, I think what they're what they're looking to do with the regulation and the number of options in it. We're we're not ready for this. We could try to force this through, but I don't think we're ready for it. I want some, I'd I'd prefer to see something much more much more thorough. And I'm totally leading you guys on how I want you to think about this, which is terrible practice on my end, but I am curious about your thoughts.
This is a this is another board goal, I think. Establish a committee, spend the year going through it, develop something that's well thought out.
Yeah, I I agree, Dr. Portis, when I was reading through this and really the AI thing when I was still a disciplinarian was just sort of like hitting the road and I was. I was really struggling through the the code of conduct piece of it. So as you were talking earlier about the policy with AI. And how fluid the plan is, which I totally appreciate, I'm thinking at the same time, gosh, I hope the code of conduct isn't super fluid because, you know. That's makes it so tough as the disciplinary. And now I love um the fact that you want to table this. I totally support that. You have a brand new disciplinary in the middle school. I'm sure he wants to be part of that conversation. He certainly seems to have a really good grasp of that age group, so. It'll be good to have him contribute to that conversation as well. I support that.
Yeah, it's something I put in my notes that I share with the board too is I want to make sure what we have. Um, in terms of our enforcement and our expectations is age and developmentally appropriate. Um, what what you can expect a high school student to be able to manage with smart technology is a lot different from what you should expect from a K to five student. Um, I I don't want K to five students wearing smart watches in the classroom. Um, it's terribly distracting, not just to the individual wearing it, but when it lights up. Um, it it's gonna distract every kid who's in the room as well. And something, and this is part of why I want it to be community wide as well, is I think. Putting putting the cell phones away, putting the devices away helps to alleviate a lot of stress for our students who are very concerned about. Well, what if I miss a text from my parents and it but it also alleviates stress for those parents because you don't feel obligated. To reach out to your kid during school hours to check in or anything like that. So. I I I think it could be good for for all parties involved. Um, depending on the age and developmental area, I think for. For high school students, we currently allow them to use their cell phones during lunch and in the hallways. Um, and this is something that I've had some pretty. Pretty engaged conversations with the administrative team here about that. They can support it, but I'd love to hear from the kids. What what do they think of it? Would they support? Lock them up and don't take them out to the end of the day. I doubt it, but um I I I think I think this conversation is worth getting the input, not only of. Of the adults in the room, but also also the kids who are experiencing it. So, all right, and any other questions, comments about either the um. Electronic communication device policy or regulation? And my goal was to drag this out till at least nine o'clock and I'm really close to getting there. All right, the the next update is on policy fifty-seven zero one, which is currently called our plagiarism policy. The only change in it is that the name is being changed to academic integrity. This to me is brilliant and I don't often compliment Strauss on their semantics, but um. There there was, it was supposed to end up being a seminal case. It didn't quite. Reach that level. Jackie probably knows more about it than I, but of um a student who had been charged with plagiarism. And his his parents challenged it saying that your plagiarism policy says it's taking the work of another person and and passing it off as your own. It used AI. He wasn't taking the work of another person. He was taking the work of another entity, but he wasn't taking the work of another person. So if it sounds like it's quibbling over a single word, it's because it is, but it ended up escalating its way up. Yeah, it moved its way up 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 the courts. What's really important for this, for the academic integrity, especially while we're working on the AI policy and plan, is that if a student generates content. Um, using AI and passes it off as their original work, that's a violation of academic integrity. Whether it's the textbook definition of plagiarism at this point is now immaterial. It is an academic integrity violation. I I I happen to like the name change.
Talk about bad parenting too. Trying to get your kid off of doing something bad at school by like a technicality.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's um. It's it's really, yeah, it's it's hard for someone to have to realize like you you want your kids to, do you want your kids to learn? You want them to be truly educated, then they they have to sometimes learn, not so much. They have to learn to take their lumps. Um, because that 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 I think is some of the greatest learning when when you learn how to how to recover from that a difficult experience. And if what you learn is that mom and dad are gonna bail you out, that's a lifelong lesson that's tough to undo.
Just just curious, and I don't mean to drag it on either, but just for my own interest. Uh, what is the difference or how does the policy look at it between someone using AI? Like you, the example you just cited and AI for grammar, fixing up the grammar.
So we don't have anything that's that precise because spell check is AI. You know, I I I think it brought up AI committee. I find it hilarious that if you start typing stupid autocorrect into an iPhone, it automatically fills in autocorrect. So autocorrect actually knows that people think it's. Anyway, um, so we we don't have, we don't have anything for that. Like, how can I tell if you use Grammarly? Like, it happens sometimes. I'll get an email from somebody. I'm like, oh, you didn't write this. This is AI. But I I'm not gonna charge somebody for, I don't know, professional integrity violation. They just tidied it up. So we 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 don't have something for that yet. Um, and I don't know that we ever will. I mean, what's the difference? I guess like if you had me proofread your essay or if you had Grammarly do it. But you're 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 getting it and um. You're getting into stuff that like a lot of times the answer is gonna be, I don't know, and and as a terrible answer, terrible. But it's also the best one at this point. Well, that's humbling.
Is it something that um that because it's our computers? It's a little bit more simple to say this, this can't be downloaded onto the computers or?
Yeah, so we we, that's a great question too. So we have control over network devices and we also have control over the network. So um anything that's on one of our devices, we we own. Um, and I actually had. Um, this is separate, but I had a conversation with a staff member from from another district. Um, and the person was asking me like, hey, the the district took stuff from my folder after I left. I was like, it's theirs. It's maybe in your folder, but it's on their drive on their network. So um it not, that was not a popular answer, by the way. But getting back to it, so um we we do have a high level of control over that, but if if you're home. You you've got, you you got access to whatever whatever's available based on your your internet and even um. Hate to say like, even with the with our devices, kids find workarounds to things as well. Um, and it's. There was something that came up a couple of years ago. I was I was absolutely disgusted by it, but it was something on TikTok about. Where they were giving kids advice on how to get around your school's network security. And I I actually um my speaking with people, I didn't speak directly with students, but but I want clear to the kids is. Who who do you think's posting this? And what do you think their motivation is? Do you think they're just cool guys who just wanna? Help you find ways to be mischievous or the are the people who are trying to set up? Vulnerabilities in 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 a network so that they can attack it and then seize our information and hold it hostage for X amount of dollars. I digress, but um we we hope that the students practice integrity on on all levels and if they are permitted to use a Grammarly program. Then they can use it. If they're told by the teacher, you can't use it. I want it to be your original. Uh, I would expect they would follow that as well. Yep, all right, uh fifty-seven ten, student grievance. Um, this one, this is a new one. Um, or it's it's actually significantly revised, but one of the things I like about the first level of this is it establishes a clear chain of command. Um, and this is advice I give people quite a bit. If they reach out to me about um a concern with a teacher. Um, or an assignment or a grade, and I point out to them, you gotta you gotta get closer to the problem. Um, I I. I I don't administer things like this. I don't have, I don't have that that viewpoint anymore. Um, in the same way that principal doesn't have as close a perspective. You want people going directly to the teacher and then it can move move up the ladder. Um, something else I really like in the language of this is on the second page, um, options or item C. Is uh it mentions to to ask for the remedy sought by the student or student's parent. I mean, situations where there is any type of grievance, I find it particularly helpful and maybe this is from paying attention to some really smart attorneys, including the one seated to my right. But to ask people, what what is this, what is the relief that you're seeking? What what is the remedy? Um, usually I try to word it in a way that doesn't make me sound like an aspiring attorney, but. It it is really important to have people identify, this is what I'm looking for. And I have had conversations, this is more so when I was a principal, I've asked people like, what is it you're hoping to get out of this conversation? And I've had people say, I don't know. And I realized they just want to be heard, which has its merits as well. Um, but this is, this is something that should just help us um in allowing students to have their grievances addressed. And our old policy still uses the word pupil from nineteen ninety-nine. Yep, yeah, pupils who may have been using pagers and peepers. In nineteen ninety-nine. All right, uh, policy eighty-five hundred is the new and um significantly updated food services policy. Um, there there's an awful lot in this, but to borrow from Shakespeare, it appears to be full of sound and fury, ultimately signifying nothing. Um, it's it's a lot of the same that we we've always had. There is one option that's available on page fifteen. Um, I I said, just just check off that students um can charge, participate in meal charge program. Um, and it's worth noting too that we will make sure that 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 kids are fed. Um, if there's a situation of insufficient means. Um, we will, we will work to support our kids and the families.
Hundred percent. Not gonna let kid come to school and not get a meal.
Yep, yeah, and 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 that's I have to say too, like I've had good experiences with Pomptonian. Um, we we used to. We used to keep spare meals when I was at Hillview, so if if a kid forgot to order lunch or whatever the circumstances were, they were fed. Occasionally I was fed as well, but that's a whole other story. Can throw it out. Alrighty, that comment was funnier in my head than it was out loud. All right, um. You know what? It's nine oh four. I've been up since four thirty. Come on, cut a guy a break. All right, spectator court of conduct for intersclass events. This one's a big one and this one, um, the state had given us advance notice that this was coming down the pike. And I give a lot of credit to um NJ SIAA, which is the governing body for athletics. Um, they contributed. Um, enormously to making recommendations here. I reached out in this policy directly to Mr. Hasler. Mr. Silipina, and I also got Mr. Sebryowski involved, even though NJ SIA does not govern middle school athletics, but I figured. Um, it's similar overview would take place um for middle school athletics and I also included. Uh, Mr. Lucas, who along with his team unfortunately has to deal with people who would be um governed by this policy. Um, ultimately, in in um in an ideal world, we would not need to have a policy like this. And all spectators would conduct themselves in a manner consistent with the fact that these are sporting events held for children. Um, who are competing to the best of their abilities, but um. A lot of passion involved. People will misbehave. Generally speaking, when people misbehave, we speak to them and problem gets corrected. Um, what this policy looks at is for the situations where the behavior doesn't get corrected or when it. Amplifies or when the initial action is so egregious that it warrants um kicking them out. So um really the 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 meat of what the board has to determine on this is um on pages two. Through, sorry, um, three through five. Everything else is pretty is pretty boilerplate and coming from both Strauss and from NJ SIAA. So what I did is um I consulted with the aforementioned administrators and also used straight. Out of what's in the stra- and not the stra- in the NJ SIA recommendations. What they're hoping to see is consistent enforcement across all school districts. Um, so that what happens here and is addressed here is consistent with what happens. In Monville, which is consistent with what happens in Booton, which happens in Mountain Lakes and 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 so forth. Um, that said, you still have local jurisdiction, you're a local governing body. And um you you answer to this community and you don't answer to NJ SIA. So if you do. Have points that you want to argue, that's a good thing. As a board, you're certainly encouraged to do that. Um, anyway, so I'm just gonna go go through it. The what NJ SIA sent is that for the first offense, um, they feel that. Um, the best punishment, if you get removed from an athletic event, is that you have to miss the next. Two home events. They say they say home events, um, both Mr. Spillit and Mr. Hasler argued very. Coherently for making it to event um to events, both home and away, and you can notify. Um, people at the other schools, hey, so and so has been prohibited from attending. Um, and they can actually deny the person admission. Um, there is a network among the athletic directors. Yeah, it it's it's tough to enforce. Um, and and if it turns out that it's unenforceable, we would just stick with the home. Um, we do, we do oftentimes send somebody to the other events as well, um, and they would be able to say. You gotta go. Um, so that the eliminating the home part tougher to enforce, but. Um, it is something that um that they felt. Adds adds a little bit of intensity, so you don't you don't get a pass to act like a maniac in in another school district while you're currently. Um, being suspended. And one thing I I wish I clarified too, and then and then I'll I'll shut off my mic. Um, where where it says the next two home events and then parenthetically adds one game for football. The logic there is that of um each football game is about ten percent of the season. Um, where if you're playing soccer, two games is ten percent of your season. So they were looking to have something that's consistent for the duration of a season.
I thought that all the recommendations as far as the number of games, the fact that it. Might be able to carry over into the next season if it occurs the last game of the season. Um, I think it was all okay.
I think the uh, so I I look at the student handbook for our our uh, our high school athletes. And these kind of, these mirror, I guess, what the uh, a high school athlete would face if they had disciplinary actions. So I think that's good. But I also think that, you know, these are, these are adults. And they should be held to a higher, like, kids are kids and they sometimes make bad decisions and they learn from them. Uh, I think adults should be held to a higher standard. I think these, this should have a little bit more teeth because if somebody's gonna be making a second offense, you're being suspended for two or four games, depending on the sport. You know, and then we're gonna give them a third chance to come back and then get suspended again or not suspended, um, banned or banned, whatever, whatever we're raising. Um, I I think that's uh, giving them way too much leash. Because if somebody's coming back again to, you know, harass a student or harass an official or harass a coach, um, I don't think, they haven't learned by the first or second, I don't think they need a third. I know three strikes, you're out, that's a saying, but you know, we want our students to be held to a very high standard. I mean, on the third offense for a student, they have to apply to the N J S I A for, to be reinstated, you know, and have a hearing. I don't know, I, that's just my, my, because I've, you know, as a coach and a, and a parent, I've seen some pretty wild behavior by parents. And it's usually by the parents, usually the kids are pretty good. Um, uh, and uh, I I don't wanna see that at our school. It happens occasionally, but you know, I'd like the board to consider maybe putting a little bit more bite into these. We, we think it's appropriate. And also, I I don't know if this addresses things that happen away from the field. It might, um, but there are cases where parents will track a kid down or harass them on social media. How do we hold them accountable? How do we keep them away from coming to our, coming to our school or field to harass a kid in the parking lot? Because they don't like that, the way a kid plays or something like that.
That would be the police, right? If it, if it happens outside of school, on social media or off school grounds, I mean, the police would get involved, wouldn't they?
True.
Yeah, and and so if if somebody is uh, is expressing hostility or anything menacing to one of our students, whether they're under eighteen or eighteen, um, we we would definitely get the police involved. Uh, you know, it's it's interesting, I was talking about the M O A, um, a couple hours ago when I started talking about policy. But um, it, sorry, couldn't resist, I couldn't resist, that's self deprecating. But it, but it's really important to note, like, we do have that communication with them. So if if somebody um, is is peeved about, yeah, something that's going on with the team dynamic and they they confront one of our students at a Dunkin' Donuts, like, that's, you can't, you can't confront the kid. So that that rises to the level of being criminal, but it's also something we would address. And it's not mentioned in in this policy, nor does it necessarily have to be. But we we have had to ban people from school property. Um, and it's, it's legally binding, you know, when we we tell our, our security team, we tell our our kiosk aides, we tell our front secretaries, like, this person is not allowed, except for on campus. If you see them, immediately call security, immediately call the police, I I get notified as well. So yeah, if there is something that was that, I say egregious, yeah, that that would escalate to a different level beyond what this policy has. So I think ba- based on what Greg's saying, and and I I joke about, it is getting pretty late. But from what Greg's talking about, this is something when we do meet as as a policy committee, generate some recommendations or even, or even options. And then when we look to get it out there for first reading at that first March meeting, um, we'll, we'll talk about, hey, this is what we discussed, this is what we're, we're recommending and and see what the the body um, wants to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally in support. My hesitancy is not the right word, but I can't think of the right word, is making sure that the parent who is exhibiting behavior at this sport is dealt with the exact same way as the parent who's exhibiting the same behavior at a different sport. Because now you have different staff members, you have different observing and and you have the different environments and some, it's just making sure that there's consistency across because I would hate for something, this parent not be able to attend X, Y, Z. Well, they probably shouldn't be able to, but this parent still is because the people in this room, for whatever reason, are using slightly different criteria than the people in this room. That makes sense.
Yeah, and I I wish I could say, oh, yeah, we're we're gonna make sure that through training, you know, we'll have the exact same enforcement.
It's so hard.
There's a human element.
It's so hard.
But um, what I, what I do like, and I feel like, um, I feel like Mr. Lucas does a really good job of training his staff um, and preparing them for the athletic events. And you're right, you're gonna get a different tenor at um, at a football game than you will at a swim meet. You know, basketball, everything's enclosed, it's very loud. It ta- it tends to be a lot, it tends to have a different type of intensity from a sport that I'm not gonna name because I think, I I I'm pretty sure one board member just made a face at me because I, that I missed the boat with swim. That swim was pretty positive, supportive. Okay, I've I have a lot to, I I have a lot to learn. But but anyway, but to to make sure that that, yeah, that what we're doing with it, with our staff, we're working as security as well as our dedicated security staff, um, that their detection is consistent, um, and that our follow through is consistent as well.
I I don't know if this can be discussed as part of the policy. But um, when a, let's say a parent, one of our parents crosses the line, in addition to talking about, you know, when, what game they can attend, not attend, um, if they are a board member of, but let's say the sports club, should they be able to still be an officer on that club interfacing with our staff and our coaches on a regular basis? They have a little more access. You know, if you're president of the hockey club, the lacrosse club, the baseball club, you may be interfacing with those coaches and have be seen in a space of authority. Um, whether, whether true or not, and if you're crossing a line on the, you know, as a fan, should that, should we allow that interface to continue?
It's a great question. Um, we don't legislate the parent boosters, or, yeah, I guess they're parent boosters. Um, that that, they, they're really tasked with legislating themselves. Um, if 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 somebody is, is engaging in behavior that warrants getting kicked out perhaps repeatedly, um, you would think that they would not be in a position of leadership or authority. But um, I, there there's no good answer to that right now, but that's a, that's a conundrum. It's gonna have Jackie bail me out, but.
I think that's the only thing we could do would be to limit their interaction with a staff member. We could say, you've been kicked out of a game, you cannot discuss, talk, contact coaches or, you know, right?
Yeah.
Well, and I don't know if they still do, but in the past, those booster clubs, though not, you know, run by the schools, meet at the schools.
Yes, we do grant them access to our facilities.
So should we be granting access to specifically the individual, not necessarily the?
I think what's important is that any policy that the board adopts provide to the board the discretion to make any decision on a case by case basis. I think that that's the highest priority of what the policy committee should adopt in. Because we could sit here and and hypothesize every sort of situation, and we still wouldn't get them all.
Yep, what she said.
All right. I wanna thank Greg, and I wanna thank Dr. Portis. It was a lot of policy to go through, and uh, you guys did a great job summarizing it and leading the discussion. So good job to both of you.
Dr. Portis did the heavy lifting. Oh, ninety percent.
All right, up next is public comment, and being that it's everyone's uh, bedtime, there's no one here to speak. So I'm gonna open it and then close it. And we're gonna move on to unfinished business. Any board member have any unfinished business?
As much as I don't wanna extend the meeting, I do have a question earlier. Um, talking about that boiler, the North Boulevard Boiler. You said you're gonna see if it's under war, do we have concern that it's not? I mean, it's so new.
It's possible.
That's crazy. Yeah, I'm saying, like, if there could be no question that it should be, I'm like, kinda shocked that we may not be covered. But I just wanted to, why, we have like a year, is like a typical manufacturer warranty a year? But like, it's so new, it's such such an expensive piece.
Yeah, it's, it's a piece of the the equipment, not not the actual boiler itself, it's a piece inside. So they're, you know, I'm not sure if that's actually covered, and that's what they're investigating right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any board member with new business? Board member announcements?
Sorry, just real quick, I attended Dr. Portis's uh, P S A S I T um, program. It was awesome, um, very much appreciated. I uh, we did kind of brainstorm possibly bringing an S I T program to prep to the school. So I'm I'm looking forward to um, hearing more about that, if that's something we think that we have some buy in for. Um, I do know a tenth grader who would absolutely enroll in that. Um, I also attended, I don't know if I spoke about this at the last meeting. I attended the um, information session for the non-school sanctioned um, Costa Rica trip, um, which was phenomenal. So I wanna thank Mrs. King and Mr. Malato for putting that all together for this amazing opportunity for the kids.
Um, I just wanted to officially welcome uh, Dave Raffo to the leadership team. I did enjoy the most recent podcasts and hearing more about Mr. Raffo, Raffo, and how his unique experiences will contribute to P B. I was also really delighted to hear his answer to what's your first impressions of the middle school, notably about the cu- culture there. Um, and I'm really excited about his ideas about service-based learning and uh, what he plans to do at the middle school. So welcome.
Okay, we do have reason to go into executive session tonight. We will discuss student matters. No action will be taken, we will adjourn from there. Next meeting will be our winter retreat here at the high school on February thirteenth. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone.